Here.
Here. Here.
Here. A motion in a second to end the room.
Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna actually right over to Dr. Salagi, but yes, we can bring you up to the table. You don't have to sit in the back. Come on up and join us here if you wouldn't mind. Right over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Schuler. So tonight we'll be giving you an update on our social emotional learning plan, but I thought before we get into that, as you know, the Board of Education, you know, has made a commitment this year and in future years to increase your support of clubs and activities. And so I thought it would be good to see kind of the fruits of that, to hear from a couple of our kids. So that's both Wheat North and Wheat Morville South to ask a student to come and just share their experience and the impact that that decision's had. So both Mr. Biskin and Dr. Stellwagen are gonna introduce a student to you and they're gonna share a little bit with that. So start with Mr. Biskin. He's gonna introduce his kiddo.
Thank you. It's a pleasure for us to be here. You know, I know a couple of meetings ago I was hearing, you know, you talk about the concept of learning and how it can occur and does occur in all different kinds of settings. And it can be formal and it can be informal, but I think the most important part of learning are the connections that students build with each other and with our staff. And I think Tyler Webb, who is a junior at Wheat North, Drew Falcon, he is here tonight to just talk about some of the experiences that he has had and how he's built connections through the platform of outside classroom. Tyler?
Hi, my name is Tyler Webb. I'm involved in marching band and tennis here at Wheat North, but I would honestly have to say one of my favorite activities is the new esports club that just started up. Um, I remember sitting at my lunch table back in like first semester and I saw this little flyer on the table. I was like, well, like it's esports club. Like that seems interesting. I play some games. So I went up and I emailed the coach. I'm like, I'm not that good at like any of the games like you're talking about here. So do you have any like business positions? So after that, like that's when I just basically started my like position of kind of helping him with like setting up the esports club. This summer, we're gonna start doing some broadcasting. Actually, so all of this is run through the state-run IHSEA, which is like the IHSA Sports Association for esports stuff. And basically, they have a thing called live streams on a platform called Twitch. Basically means anyone from anywhere, as long as you like have a device, can go and watch players from different schools go and compete against each other in like these matches and stuff like normal sports. And so this summer, we're gonna start trying and starting up a Twitch channel for our own school to kind of get more students involved and stuff. One of the other things that I really love about esports club is the ability for literally anybody to go through and like play. So like one of the things that you would think about when like in terms of barriers for joining the club would be like, do I have the proper equipment at my house to like be able to play? Like you need a good computer. You need like a mouse. You need a headset. You need all this stuff. Well, just recently, we bought a bunch of computers that we're putting in the library of the school. So anybody from any background with any like amount of equipment at home can come into school and like play any games that they want, which I think. And yeah, another thing why I love esports at the school so much is actually after school, when I graduate, I'd kind of like to go into that, like that for a career. So having like this experience of being in esports and being this involved with more of the business side of it, I think is gonna really help me when going into college where there's some like majors even, minors and stuff in esports. Just get into that career and get into the burgeoning business world. You?
Also, could I ask now, Dr. Stellwagen, if you want to introduce your student and Hope come on up to you?
My name is Matt Stugan, the Activity Director at Wheat North South. Both North and South, we have more than 50 activity programs for kids who long into believe in promoting growth and interests, making social connections. We also want every kid to have a chance and opt along to that larger part of high school that doesn't end at 215. With your commitment to all the extracurriculars, we've been able to continue to add new programs just like we heard with esports. This year, Wheat Morville South, we've added a bunch as well. And Hope Cavan here, representative of a whole bunch of those things. So I'll let her take it away.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Hope Cavan and I'm a senior at South. I will be letting you know about some of our newest activities over at South. So to start off, Dr. Stellwagen launched a new program this year called Tiger Mentoring, and I was a part of that and I got to learn some leadership skills by helping out some of our freshmen. They got to learn about new skills on how to prepare for final exams, get involved, all sorts of. Another club I'd like to mention is our Health Sciences Club, which is brand new as of second semester. I'm involved in that because I would like to go into the health sciences for college, which I plan to major in. So it is very nice to have an opportunity. Thank you.
Chris? Dr. Salagi, one quick question. Are you transitioning off of this or can I be here for a second on the club piece? So one, awesome. I appreciate hearing kind of both of the insights, North and South. So explicitly, our goal is to make sure that every student at the two high schools is in some kind of activity where they have that opportunity to build the connection with adults. Do you see any barriers to opportunities for students to participate? Do you hear anything that would be helpful certainly to the board as they look at how they can continue to expand opportunities? I think we have a lot of great opportunities and a lot of students that take advantage of a lot of those opportunities, which is awesome, but I want to see every student, right, with that piece. I'm just curious, anything that you see or hear from your classmates that stands in the way?
Not really. I think the addition of esports actually like includes or like involves a lot more people who wouldn't otherwise have activities. Yeah, besides that, I think, great job.
Anything, South?
I find that our Tiger Mentorship Program helps our students by helping develop for later.
South, you wanna?
Just, I think the fluidity of activities maybe compared to things like athletics, it's not some esports was not a thing years ago. Some of the things that we're doing, so commitment to continue to increase with extra dollars to kind of flexible to students. Time, so by giving us some flexibility, take on some, like esports or like athletics. That's a great thing that probably five or 10 years ago wasn't an interest there and now kids are in support of esports. So it's not a roadblock effect.
What does that look like?
We have a process and Matt, you could probably speak to this because Mrs. Nellis and you obviously work hand in hand with this, but we have a specified date each school year that if students do have about a club or something of that sort that they have to submit that prior to, I believe it's October something.
Yeah, it's approximately six weeks or so, five for new club or the rationale behind. Set of so kids. Six weeks or so, there's. Have kind of a practice run for.
Then is there a thought that all the clubs are? I mean, I know that there was something like for incoming freshmen, but current students?
Sure. So our Student Activities Office is sort of in the center of our of our school and students know where that is. They know who to go to. And if they don't, everybody else in the building does and they're able to help those students. We've done something a little different this, the past few years, even prior to COVID, in terms of having an activity fair once school starts. So everybody's in the building, freshmen, sophomores. We open it up to them during lunch. We have them go to the main gym and we have tables set up. All of the clubs are in that area and they're able to talk with people and get an idea of what certain clubs are and if that meets the interest that they that they may have. I mean, I think it's it's great that we, currently, we're a little over 80% of all students are involved in something, in something, right? So there's a connection point at both of our schools that I think is very, very strong. But we are always looking to try to provide opportunities for students to bring their ideas to us. And then, of course, if we can actually support it, have an authority that's gonna spend time to be able to sponsor that club. You know, all those things go hand in hand. And we also each year look at different clubs and ask questions like, is what this club is doing right now still meeting the interests of our students? Is it still relevant? Like, take Pep Club. Pep Club 30 years ago was, let's draw posters, let's have signs, let's put them up. The Pep Club now is to probably deal more with social media, tell the story of our school. So there are there are different things that influence the direction and the purpose of some of the clubs.
Called old school.
It's a tried and true strategy, Mr. Long.
Yeah, we've evaluated that some this year. I will tell you, while some kids have used it, use of it has not been as significant as we thought. Certainly, both of our schools have looked at, how many kids are you for activities, athletics, or just actually just to help? And numbers have been pretty low, pretty minimal, but we're still evaluating this year of both high schools. I don't know if you, but right now, we haven't seen significant usage of it, but certainly, we're tracking that throughout the end of the year. And when we bring our extracurricular activity this summer, we'll report on that.
Not sure who to ask, maybe either one.
Yeah, there's a lot of follow-up with staff, patient staff, represented group that have. There is the reality at times where there are some students that just don't feel the need to want to be part of something at school. Now, that is a very small students and it is, we exhaust every effort to try to make sure that we do something that we connect with. But we do have several students that are working, taking care of family members at home. I always worry like, I don't want to make those students feel bad either because they have some bigger choices that they have, maybe they don't even have a choice. They're forced to work, forced to take care of people at home. And even at pep assemblies and stuff, and at the end say, hey, you know, make sure you're supporting each other, whether you're having to work, taking care of somebody, whether you're going to the football game, whether, you know, you try to lude everybody because there are reasons why some students aren't. I think we're doing a really good job of providing opportunities for students to connect at our school, but we're always looking at saying, can we do something? Something we're missing or a gap somewhere. Yeah, that's a very point question.
A lunch. Have those by the school. I know that's hard when you've got ever second.
Yeah, that would be a logistical challenge. There's no question, but it's something that we have looked at. It's the idea of, you know, you need adult sponsor at times, teaching, or they have a lunch during the time. Now, there are some that will work, you know. In terms of the academic portion, we have teachers working to help kids all the time. But in terms of like an activity or a club, we don't necessarily have them meet during the course of the school day because that could be a slippery slope too. Well, we can't do it after school. Why can't we do it on school day? Might run into some challenges. That is something that we have looked at. It's just with access being 23 minutes or so, it's not a long. And here's what we have found with access period. It's 23 minutes for a lot of kids where they don't have an adult telling them what they should be doing. I think sometimes really like that. Do we like to hear that or not, right? It's just a little bit of a break. We all need a break during the day. Something that we're always trying to.
Sorry. I know that there are certain classrooms that are up for students to kind of come together and I'm thinking, and it works. Classes, I know that was close because hopefully going back, because that was a place where.
And that's currently happening. I mean, we have students that are practicing during these times supervised such. And those are students that are putting in the effort beyond probably what students are. But yeah, we're creating spaces.
So Matt, you used the phrase only 23 minutes and it made me think of, well, high schools in Page County, Downers Grove, North and South are actually changing their schedule next year. Go to a modified block to more time, students to do work, connect with teachers, engage in that kind of work. Is that something that we have thought about? Might we think about it somewhere? Do we, that's a kind of a different structural design for the day?
Yes. So scheduled during the course of the school day, a big challenge. We have, it's almost though like you have to look at the backend. What are the requirements for students to graduate? Are those still current, irrelevant, pertinent? Is it something that every kid should have to go through in order to obtain diploma? And then how can we then look at that time? Right now, we have a traditional period school day. I know that Downers North and Downers South are doing what's considered a hybrid schedule. So I believe Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they have a one through eight through seven period day. And then on Tuesday, Thursday, they split that whole period day into periods one through four on Tuesday, five through eight Thursday, longer class periods. They're gonna give it a try and I think a lot of, I think the main reason they're doing that is because they have a facility now with construction that promotes and supports that for a large number of students. I had the opportunity to actually go to Downers North last Friday for a meeting and it is impressive. It is like a college, like a Big Ten College Student Union. It is, it's very nice. So they have the means right now, construct to be able to support unit classes, things of that sort. Not that we don't. I mean, look, my view, we are without want. We have space. We have the ability to do different things. But that challenge of how do we construct time and how do we create time and make time? I think we took a big leap when we did the access period attached to lunch, which was several years ago. I'd kind of like to see how Downers North and Downers South do with the new hybrid schedule. But yeah, it is, we talk about time a lot. It's always a question of can we actually do it?
Thanks for that. I wasn't, I was just trying to put it on the table that.
Definitely is.
Yeah, I just again want to thank Dr. Stellwagen, Mr. Biskin, and our students for, thing that resonates with me is, as both of them spoke, they spoke about a passion that was either ignited or enhanced. Study or a career they're gonna now. So kind of whole goal connected. Yeah, thank you. And just a side note for the Board of Education, Hope Cavan, who spoke tonight, is a former Whittier student. I did not know that she was coming south to select a student, but in my, she was at Whittier as a first grader in my first year as principal. Obviously, I had her all the way through. So I think one thing we need to recognize that's unique about our district, even though there are many unit districts, there's not as many as we think. So we really have something special. Kids through and think about programming, think about the experience, about the touch points that we have all the way through, actually something really special. And it's not something that all of our districts, all of the surrounding areas. I think it's important just to make note of that and know that's something special. I think that that's also probably plays into some of the good culture thing for our teachers and our kids in the district. Okay, so I'm gonna not really switch gears, but I wanted to make you a, just a peek into one of the impacts and how it translates to levels. So I'm gonna dive in a little bit to the social emotional learning update tonight for you. And there's three key questions that I want to make sure we get answered by the end of the night for you. So first of all, I want to recap, what were our goals this year? Secondly, what were the actions that we took around those goals during this school year? And then lastly, hope to touch on, on how do we keep getting better in social emotional learning space? So give a little preview into some of the things that we're looking towards next year. Certainly not a finalized work plan of any sort, but some of the priorities in some of those areas as we go through tonight. A starting point anytime we talk about social emotional learning is our framework. So really, the reason that I start here is that our social emotional learning framework in District 200, that is what defines ACL for us. If you were to ask people their definition of social emotional learning, you're gonna get a lot of different definitions, interpretations. I think it's important that one of the first things that we did really tackling social emotional learning, we defined it collectively this in 2018. Important to remember that our framework is rooted in research and really kind of three key research points that our framework's rooted in as we sought to build this. One, does this, does the research and the beliefs practices that are listed within here affect student achievement and learning? Have they been found to impact student mental health and wellbeing? Have they been found to impact behavioral well? Behavioral wellbeing. So anything that we talk about tonight, our goals, our actions, future actions, any of the data that we bring forth, is all aligned with emotional learning that defines what ACL is for us in District 200. So what were our goals this year? You can see we've highlighted where they're aligned. Six goal areas I'm gonna talk about tonight more in depth on subsequent slides, but as an overview, our first goal always, and this will always be, and Mr. Biskin alluded to this, is to ensure that all of our kids have a connection point with a trusted school. Another goal for us this year was to ensure that all of our kids know how to advocate for themselves and people who may be present, especially a risk of harm to self. Third goal of our department was to introduce the National Assessment Scheme, the elementary and middle school levels, really as part of an assessment framework that we started to build out this year. Fourth goal for us was to expand our successful reentry for students that may have been coming back and returning from an intensive hospitalization. As you know, we did this at the high school two years ago. We expanded the school. Fifth goal, as you heard about here on the front end, was to expand participating activities in clubs. And then lastly, this is one goal stated, but really two parts of it was to implement search-based foundational behavior practices while also being proactive to really bring down crisis. So gonna talk about this a little bit further on the subsequent slide. But in summary, you can see here, this is a list of all the strategies to match those goals. As we go on here on each slide, I'm gonna talk about each goal, strategy, talk about kind of the story behind that and then also if there's any data or information provided, we'll provide that for you as well. So really the backbone of our, in District 200, I believe is the foundation of social emotional learning, is to ensure that all of our kids have a relationship with a trusted. We developed this and believe in this one because we know clearly that we have a higher chance of higher achievement levels for our kids, having higher levels of connectivity. And when our kids try and have a connected trusted adult in school, it's a pretty good preventative factor against emotion. But as Mr. Biskin alluded to as well, we're always trying to get better in that area. But instead of just saying it and making it a part of our culture, we also want to be strategic around it. If there's strategic approaches we can, we're gonna do them. One of the things that we do and have done this year is obviously conducted a relationship survey. And that's really just, that's the. that's the initial touch point to find out really, do we have kids that are feeling like they have a trusted adult? Can they identify that trusted adult? But it's also important for our teams to use that information to think about our kids who don't and really do some outreach to develop authentic connections. So that happens in a lot of different ways. I think as you go through here tonight, or even think about the opportunities we're talking about, the connected adult stuff through clubs and activities, finding out or finding out what adults go reach out to, are some of the things that our schools have done. Our data is listed here from that survey and most of our schools conducted this survey really at the first part, first semester of the school year. Elementary, 95% of our kids identified a trusted adult. Middle school level, 84%, and at the high school level, 88%. I give you this data saying this has not come with a post-assessment though. This was a one-time survey given at the beginning of the year. And certainly, our initial work with this survey was not around using it as a formal assessment tool, but really as an informative, to inform us of how we can connect with kids, right? As we move forward, I think it could be used as both, right? So that we could potentially get information even on the backend and maybe conduct something at the end of the year that may be a part of the conversation later tonight. But I just kind of plant that there as another piece as well. I think the other piece that I want to make mention of, and I'll highlight this later on as well, we can get better in this space even with relationship mapping. Some of the things that we're looking to do next year is not only look at our students and who doesn't have a connected adult, but also making sure, especially at our middle and high schools, that all of our staff members receive the students who have identified them as a trusted adult to make sure we're cross-referencing that as well, right? There may be a student who has identified an adult and we got to make sure that our adults know that as well so that there be an extra, just aware of that and connecting. And another piece that we're looking at as well is having our staff actually do a reverse relationship map where our staff actually identify, can they identify academic and or personal information about our students? So that they're seeing that they're connected to students. It's another layer that we're looking at as we move into next year with our relationship work. Second goal that I talked about was to ensure that our students know how to advocate for themselves and for peers when a risk of harm may be present and especially a risk of harm to self. And so the strategic way that we've approached this this year is through our signs of suicide program. The key message of this program is acknowledge, care and tell. This has happened at eighth, ninth, 11th and 12th grade in our high schools. The key message of that really is our kids get a lesson, the acknowledge piece being that teaching them to acknowledge that they see signs of depression or suicide in themselves or in a friend and that it's serious and that they should care enough to tell them, to tell the friend that they are concerned and need help. And then to tell a trusted adult that you're worried about yourself or your friend, right? That's the, what I would consider the tier one. And when I say tier one, that's kind of the message or the action for all. And we hope as this program continues, that that culture of ACT or ACT will permeate and become a more part of our school culture. Really in year one of what we would consider more of a full implementation of this, we did pilot it the year before, but we built up to to making it more systematic. And we hope that that becomes a part of our culture. And we also hope that it helps to de-stigmatize mental health as well and making sure, I think through the message of ACT, that we can help kids. The second piece of that is, at the end of that lesson, students take a really quick assessment called the BSAD. It's the Brief Screen for Adolescent Depression. And so one piece when we implement this program, it is an all hands on deck effort. We have, let's go out. We're good. We've got our psychologists, social workers, counselors, our emotional wellness coordinator who heads this up at the building where it may be taking place, they're all on deck. So they can evaluate these assessments that the kids take at the end of each period in case there is a student that is at risk or at significant risk, so that we're able to be responsive that day up. We don't want time going by and we don't want our kid, a kid leaving that may be at risk or need more help, right? So one, I want to give a lot of credit to our teams, but I also don't want to underscore the time and effort that it takes for our schools to do this at each grade level. It usually takes one to two days. Now for a student, they don't experience that because it's just one class period. And usually that lesson's being delivered by a health teacher accompanied by a counselor or a social worker. We always have two people deliver that lesson. One of the things that I would say too though as well is when giving that screening, you know, typically we hope to not have any surprises. But if you talk to our administrators, if you talk to our mental health professionals in our schools, they'll always say that this is a positive program because sometimes we do find students who may be internalizing and we're able to get them help. And sometimes there are students, even with all the things that we have in place that weren't on our radar, and this extra layer gives us that and helps us to be responsive to get our students what they need. So again, we hope to continue this and continue to work in this area. And we hope that it continues to grow for our kids on kind of both ends. Next goal, want to highlight and just dig into, and this connects to the learning part of our framework, but it also connects, I think, to the emotional behavioral wellness part of our framework. A goal this year was really to look at how do we assess social emotional learning, right? Is this a kind of just an out there concept? Are there ways that we can assess this and can that assessment be useful for us? So this year, we piloted a universal screener and assessment tool at the elementary and middle school levels at some of our schools. And the way that we got at this goal was to use a tool called Sabers, which measures social, academic and behavioral and emotional pieces, really that tie to school performance. And it really looks at three different areas within your, within your folders. I actually provided the areas that are measured. On this, it's the green sheet of paper. It's a Sabers items assessed. Teacher really three times a year looks at this. Takes them about a minute to fill out and they rate it on a Likert scale, three different areas. Looking at really our students' behavioral and social emotional behavior, right? So what does this give us or what has the pilot told us this year? I think really three pieces that it gives us. One, this assessment piece gives us a whole school picture of the social emotional health of our kids, especially as it pertains to how they can function in school. So you get a whole school health piece. You can see the data from our schools. And what I will tell you is holistically, that's pretty healthy data, right? When our school teams looked at this, it's another layer of an assessment, but they also said it really didn't have a lot of surprises. But we also know for individual students, that can ebb and flow depending on their experience or what they're going through. But our whole school data, when you think about either academic or emotional programming, typically you want 80 to 85% of your kids really, you know, you shouldn't be providing intervention for, shouldn't need extra levels of support. This data reinforces that really at this point. Again, it's not a false sample as we had believe four elementary schools pilot this and two middle schools, but next year we will have a fuller sample. So one, it gives us a whole school look at the health of our, of our kids. The second piece that an assessment screen like this gives us is it gives us some individual data, right? So Sabers is actually a part of an assessment suite that we already use. That's called FastBridge. FastBridge is what we use for math and reading screening as well. We use that as an assessment tool. And we use that three times a year and it gives us really, really important nationally norm data. Utilizing Sabers is really just a complement to that. So now on an individual basis, our teams meet and gather and look at data at whole school and individual levels. Now we've got a piece of it that says, is behavioral getting in the way? Is, is, is emotional health getting in the way? It's another piece. It's not an end-all be-all, right? It's one piece of information, but certainly can help us to better problem solve for kids, better provide the right supports and really target supports if needed. So from an individual perspective, there's some benefit there as well. The third piece is ultimately it gives you trend information as a school and for students, right? So again, I mentioned kids will go through different things, especially during their journey with us in District 200. And we hope that we don't have lots of kids in that summer high-risk category, but you're doing this three times a year. It will help you to see if there is things that come about with a student. You can always look back or look at this information and it can be a vital piece of it for our kids and for our schools as we even look at it. And even as we look from a school-wide perspective on how we allocate resources. So again, another useful piece of our information, I think, can be helpful in problem solving. Not, not as much only from the social emotional side, but also from the academic side. One of the key questions I can always go back to from when I was a principal and we would be problem solving for an individual student. Many times we were trying to unlock if the, if the issue or the problem we were trying to solve was behavioral. Was it an academic deficit? Was it an intent, you know, what was it? This is another piece that can be added to the layer. As we go into next year, our plans would be to actually solidify this at elementary and middle school for fourth and fifth grade and sixth and seventh grade, right? So we're building out an assessment framework as you can kind of see here. And I've put that just kind of what, what our assessments look like within your folders as well.
Chris, well, that, if you, when you have that data systemically for kids, talk about reporting to parents. Will you align that with the, some of the pieces on the standards-based report card as well? So parents are aware of that observational data?
Yeah, yeah. It will be reported with what we report with reading and math and FastBridge as well. Right now, what we've looked at is having that be potentially part of a portal that parents will be able to log right into ParentView, I think, is the platform. So certainly that's one of the pieces with FastBridge, even when our whole assessment committee looked at it this year, that it would be available.
So again, from a parent lens, I'm a first grade parent. I can log in through ParentView, see my FastBridge reading and math assessment as well as my Sabers assessment data for my kid.
You would be able to see that. Let me keep us moving here as we, as we kind of go through our goals. Next piece is coordinated to emotional wellness. This is one that's familiar to you, but I think it's important as well as two years ago, you know, we, our last school year, so the 20, 2020, 2021 year, we, we added a new personnel at our high schools, emotional wellness coordinators programming. And the key piece of that, they have multiple pieces to their job role was to, but the essential function was to ensure successful reentry for our kids from the hospital setting in grades at the high school level. We increased that this year to add a support for that at the middle and high school levels. So we have one emotional wellness coordinator on the south side for Addison and Hubble and one on the north side for Monroe and Franklin. And the central role of this person really is, we know that students, for whatever the reasons or for many reasons, that we have some students that have, have been hospitalized and need intensive support. And we want, when they're ready to come back to us, we want that to be a smooth transition as smooth as possible. So having one central person that can be that go-to person for the child, for the family if need be, but also for the staff at the building, right? So prior to this position, you maybe had a counselor carrying that load, or maybe it was a social worker, maybe it was a psychologist, right? This allows them to be freed up, doesn't mean they're still not a part of the process. And they may be a central part of the process depending on their relationship with the student or the family. But this gives you a one key point person to ensure that transition happens smoothly back into the school for the kiddo or making sure we're looking out really for anything for that student. Also worth mentioning, I talked about expanding our signs of suicide preventative program to the middle school level. These are the folks who had that up at the school level. So they're kind of the main coordinator person, working with the administrator at the building of happening that. So as you hear, and I didn't mention this at the first slide, but it was written, I talked about an aligned but layered approach, right? When I talk about our emotional wellness coordinators, right, that's a layered approach for students who really are needing intensive interventions. But that's now where all of our time is spent. We're also putting time at the front end for programming for all kids as well. So different layers hoping to impact students where they may need it, if need be. Learning, right? You heard a lot about this at the front end, right? We wanted to expand our offerings for student participation in clubs and activities in K-12. So you heard from our high schools tonight, and certainly this was you know, something that I think pairs really well with our relationship work. But I want to make mention too, that we've had a lot of excitement about this at the elementary level. Prior to this commitment and this addition, we ran two clubs at our elementary level. And now with this addition, we're running them at a 75 to one student ratio. So what that gets you is about four to seven clubs at every one of our elementary schools. And they're using those up. We have a lot of student participation. I can remember one of our principal meetings, we usually start them asking them to share positives and 10 out of our 13 elementary principals spoke about the participation, the excitement. So this has been a key tool. One, to get our kids reconnected coming back this year and giving that full student experience to our students. But really been good, I think, too, a good strategic effort. And Dr. Stellwagen talked about this, to be strategic as we move forward in years, to look at some of the things that have high interest and consistency amongst schools, right? So while we certainly want to honor some student voice, especially at the secondary level on what clubs or interests they may have, we're going to find some consistency now, especially starting at the elementary level where we can have some programming that may be consistent at the elementary, middle and high school and build some programming just like we do in athletics, right? If we see some of those consistencies. So that's what both Matt Stellwagen and Melissa Nillis, our activities coordinator, we in North have talked a lot about their excitement in that. And then certainly just the opportunities that you've seen afforded to our kids. We hope that that continues. This commitment's allowed us just to really be more open, more strategic about it. And hopefully you heard that tonight. This is something that we monitor on our dashboard. So your board dashboard, you monitor athletics, activities and clubs, kind of all under one piece. And this will be a year, really an almost a baseline year because we've had kind of the two, two and a half years or the year and a half prior where we didn't have a full year's dataset. So we're excited to bring that information to you this summer when the school year is over and we have all that tabulated, we'll be monitoring that. But excited, I think it's really important and gives kids an opportunity to explore their interests and desires. But also this is a place where the skills of SEL kind of take over, right? Like kids are applying those skills and all the different things that they're doing, right? Time management, how do I build relationships? How do I take on challenges? All those things we want kids to do to be successful at the next level, able to do it here. Last goal was to implement really research-based foundational behavioral practices at our elementary level. And also make sure kind of district-wide that our staff know how to proactively respond in crisis behavioral situations, right? So how do we accomplish or kind of attack this goal? One was really through focused professional learning. So district-wide, we provided professional learning on student-teacher relationships, classroom and behavior management, crisis prevention and de-escalation and restorative conversations. We worked really closely with our behavioral specialists within the district. And then our administrators joined that behavioral specialist along with staff members at the schools to provide that training. Myself and Dr. Kyle also partnered in that work as well because our worlds cross over there too, is with discipline and student behavior. So that was, that's a piece that we know we always had to start with learning with our teachers so that we can really give foundational information and really hope that that translates into practice. One of the ways that that translates into practice though is thinking early when we think about behavior and how we shape behavior. So one of the things that we were in an implementation stage this year at the elementary level was really with our core behavioral classroom framework. This is really a framework that one staff were trained on as well, but also that is a living, breathing piece that you can actually check off, that is available for our teachers to utilize, that really clearly communicates expectations for a successful classroom environment. And why is that important, right? When you eliminate distractions, when clear, when kids have clear language and clearly know what's expected of them, you improve learning outcomes, right? We're here to learn and grow. And so this is a really important piece. When you don't have a well-structured, well-managed classroom, a classroom that's predictable, where kids know what's expected, where routines are in place, where relationships are established, all those things that go into it, right? You end up not having an environment that's 100% conducive for learning, right? And so what we want to try and stay away from is those significant disruptions, those escalated pieces. If so though, at the elementary level, because that's where sometimes we see the self-regulation, where kids may start to struggle or not have the coping skills to struggle with that. We do have a disruptions protocol as well that we've implemented, which again, just clearly identifies who the folks in the building are that can respond to significant behavioral issues and what those behavioral issues are that would happen in an elementary classroom. So how do we keep getting better in this space? Certainly, this is not a full plan, but reflecting and thinking about, you know, how do we always get better? How do we improve? Few areas I want to highlight, a few of whom will expand on some of the stuff I talked about tonight and a few of about tonight and a few are a few new things that I want to touch on. First, I spoke earlier about enhancing our relationship mapping process, right? We're doing some good things there, but I think I highlighted some strategic approaches that we can do to even make that better, right? How do we make sure all of our staff are informed of the kids that have identified them? And then how do we have our staff actually map students, making sure that they're identifying and personally connecting with kids? We plan to expand our assessment tool. So, when I say expand that, move from a pilot stage into an implementation stage to a tool that we think will complement our math and reading piece in the Fast Bridge space as well. Something that's really exciting, June 6th, we, we're going to be hosting a leadership training for all of our schools. So, our schools are bringing leadership teams. So, we'll probably have about two hundred folks in District 200 that are going to go through really what we would call a leadership learning lab. It's going to be put on by Trevor Reagan and the focus of this really just sits in areas that I think correlate both in the academic, but also in the social emotional and the cultural space. Big focus on growth mindset, you know that mindset's a part of our SEL framework, but we want to develop leaders and cultivate that within our school culture and we think that starts with our administrators and our teacher leaders in the district. The session will also focus on overcoming fear, right? We want, we want to make sure fear doesn't get in the way of helping us grow and get better. And again, that starts with our leaders. We want that to translate to our teachers and ultimately we want that to translate to our teachers so our kids have a better experience. And then lastly, we'll focus in on how do we become better learners and taking action in culture. So, we're excited for this. It's rooted in mindset, but it's really rooted in getting better and improving and that's not just about SEL, that's about our entire organization. Another piece that's important, we'll be talking more about it, just worked with our administrators on this and with Mrs. Murphy, but certainly as we, as we enter into a math adoption, there is a place where social emotional learning complements that and the place where it is, is really around expectations and mindset, right? Really having a productive mindset, not only as a staff member, but as a student. And really what that means is, is having a belief that all kids can learn at high levels, making sure that we are providing our kids access to high-level rigor and believing that our kids can learn at high levels and also giving our kids challenging material, right? So that they're really at that kind of zone of proximal development where growth can take place. All of that kind of falls into your mindset and belief about kids and the things that you will give them and deliver to them. And ultimately, we want that to translate to our students. We want our students to be confident learners, we want them to take risks, we want to improve their self-efficacy, right, throughout their path. So, certainly excited about that work and, you know, seeing how that can complement our work in math. And then talked a little bit already about continuing to enhance our clubs and activities. So, just to summarize, three key questions we want to get answered for you tonight and that was what were our goals, what were the actions we took and how do we get better? So, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions or comments for Dr. Slaggy?
I have two. Thanks, this is fun. I think I brought this up before, but I want to be really direct with my question about the focused professional learning. Again, we all know the research is very clear on the harmful impact of teachers not being well-trained in culturally responsive teaching leading practices. I'm wondering if we can include a bullet point, either anti-racist teaching practices, which we've done in this district with Tyron Howard and others, or culturally responsive as directly explicitly connected to SEL. You don't have to answer that right now.
Yeah, the only thing, I don't know if it's a response, but this, this training I'm referring to did not include the bullets, I'm referring to the training that happened this year, those four bullets were a part of the training that was, that happened this year, that's what I'm, I guess, referring to in this particular context, right?
So, in the, in the future, when we look at what kinds of training our teachers need in order to advance these goals, we know that's one of them. We know that teachers who are less developed in that area can cause harm unintentionally in these ways and we know promoting those teaching practices can offer solutions in these ways. So, just making that connection explicit in the professional learning opportunities going forward, I think will help advance these goals.
Any other questions?
So, first off, I appreciate you, Dr. Slaggy and the administrative team for continuing this. I think this is something that Chris and I first maybe got really stronger behind five, six years ago when we created the board committee on SEL. So, it's great to see such continuous focus on this. Couple variety of points. I think the first one is really maybe part of the next conversation on the dashboard is how do we know, how can we measure if we're actually having an impact on kids and making progress on this? I'm not sure we have, I'm not asking for the answer right now, it's just kind of a prompting question that it'd be great to feel the way to have a measure of what that is and if we're really making an impact. Couple, another, couple other really quick points. First off, on the relationship mapping, one of the, I'm glad you commented on that is just an observation I made in preparing for the, for this meeting was, you know, it's great that the students are identifying, you know, who their trusted adult is, it's great that they're, we're letting the teachers know or the trusted adult know that this student is their, their contact. What are we, what are we doing to actually help them get connected and make that connection during the school day or after the school day? Are we going through a process to make sure that, it's not just knowing that we're, they're the trusted adult, but actually forcing that connection, forcing that, enabling that connection?
Yeah, we, we have a menu of options for our schools to kind of, to implement, right? When we've got students who don't have that, right? So, we've actually got a professional learning community crosswalk that PLCs can look at and actually look at the students and decide who is the adult that's going to be the connector to that kid. The reason we do that is we want that connection to be authentic, so we don't want, you know, somebody who doesn't really know the kid making an unauthentic connection. So, the purpose of that is to say, who has an in or knows something about this student who would maybe like to make kind of that first step, right? The other process is going through it to seeing, can we do some reach out with the club and activities and athletic, activity piece at the, at the secondary level? At the elementary level, it comes down to individual problem solving, we usually get that, we can get that shored up pretty quickly. And so, certainly we have a menu of options, I shared them earlier in this year with the SEL board committee, but happy to even expand on that in the future to look at some of what, what that menu is because we want that to expand as we strategically think about, you know, what do we do after this? I think that's a really valid point.
Another question I had was, it's great that we're doing these assessments at the elementary and middle school level and I know we're still early in that, are we going to have the ability to track how students are doing on those assessments from year to year to year to feel like, are we seeing trend data that is concerning? Do we have the infrastructure to do that? What do we, how do we react, building a plan for how do we react when we see something?
Yeah, we have started that. In the pink sheet in your, in your board packets there, is really the start of our, what I would call our SEL assessment framework, but it's not just assessments, data information, right? So, all those different layers are really highlighted there, from hospitalizations to the risk of harms that we're doing, to our trusted adult survey piece. I think the one piece that will give us trend data actually is the Sabers piece. We haven't expanded it yet into, to our high schools, but we, how our, next year as we build out that platform, we know we have the SOI data and the relationship data, but certainly we've built out a platform so we can start that process, we know it's important.
Then my, my last question was, do we get, are we getting to the point, is there a point where we actually develop a class for kids where we're teaching more directly SEL? I don't know if it's a full class, but one of the, one of the quarters in middle school maybe where kids are taking an actual instructional class, but they get a grade on social emotional learning? Is that, is that, is that another path to take to help kids that are struggling?
Yeah, so certainly there is a place for direct teaching of SEL skills, right? We've identified that. For all kids, right, the path that we've taken is, is really, how does it complement or how is it integrated into the learning experience, right? So, the really high leverage engaging learning tasks should integrate the social emotional skills because kids are really doing the skills, right? And they're integrated in and then we're being very purposeful in what those skills are, right? Many of them are already reflected within our portrait of a graduate. So, do we go to a direct class? We haven't had conversations about that, but certainly we have recognized that for some students, but not all students, that there is a place where they need very strategic, specific, direct teaching skills.
Brad, my only thought too around that, I just, just want to comment on it for a second. I, I don't think it's intended this way, but that feels to me a little bit like remediation in the academic space, meaning that I think if you were to take a group of students that you had, you perceive to lack certain social emotional skills and really try to give them this like sort of intense, almost remedial experience, I'm not sure that's the best way to help bridge the gap. I don't know definitively answer, but I would prefer to think about it in sort of that same like learning acceleration space and how do, how do we simultaneously, you know, continue to together, I think, and just one little parallel to this, I think we just had this discussion with, actually I think it was with elementary and middle school folks where we said the, the cycle you run into in remediation is that we identify students previously who have struggled in reading or math and what do we do at the middle school? We give them more, but in order to give them more, we take them out of their electives, we take them out of these opportunities that they probably really need to like embrace and excel. So, we sort of, we take the fun out of school to put them into that. So, I, I, I get the, the piece, I just, I think maybe we need to think a little different on how we could perhaps approach that through like a learning acceleration space.
Yeah, and I think the lens I was looking at it through was, that question through was not like targeted students based on data, but all students would go through that? So, maybe it wouldn't be remediated?
Sure.
I don't have a solution, I'm just, again, getting ideas on the table for future thinking.
Are you, are you, are you talking about like explicit teaching of skills? Is that more what you're?
I don't know what I'm talking about.
Okay.
But I think so, yeah.
But we have targeted that already, like at specific, like we explicitly teach some, but it's more than integrated.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, really the standards for SEL are integrated into the health standards, right? So, our schools have identified those standards are integrated into the health plan. Like if you look at, at the high school level, they have a wellness series, both of them where it's integrated right into the health curriculum, same at the middle school, even down to the elementary pieces. So, those specific standards, actually we even interact, especially the goals, the three primary goals in SEL, interact with, with the health piece of it. So, they're, you know, that's where I would say if you want to be absolutely direct about the integration side of it, but to that point, the complement of that, or even if you look at the stuff from ISB, they will say, right, highest leverage is integration, complementing academics.
It was just a, what more can we do question.
Yeah, which again, totally fair, right? It always, you know, challenges, you know, when, when you allocate time to that, right? You're taking time away from some other experience, right, that we're trying to enhance. The, one other piece though that you asked about too, which I just, I don't want to lose sight of is, so when, when Chris mentions the Sabers assessment and the alignment to the Fast Bridge data and the ability for parents to see that explicitly, that also means we have that then as trend data. So, that information will go into what will be a new data warehousing structure that we have to purchase a new data warehousing system anyway, based on our, our other system kind of going away. So, we will, we'll have that information, right? And again, just like you do in the academic space, then ideally as you're collecting that information systemically, seeing where your gaps are, that's also another way to say, hey, observationally, you know, our third grade teachers are giving us this data, this is a missing skill for kids, so then how do we systemically build that into the direct instruction? But we will have the ability to, I think, do what you're asking about, which is to monitor that over.
Yeah, and I guess that's great. When I asked the question about trend data, I was actually in my mind thinking for individual students.
Right, which you will have. So, that's what a warehouse does. It does it both for the, the group and for you as, as a, as a parent or for us looking at individual students to see their progress over time.
Takes time to build trend.
Does?
By definition.
Does? Does.
I remember my other question. I just had an interest only in this, the Sabers assessment. I'm sorry if you said it, but I don't remember, in terms of reporting, it has to do with the trend data. I noticed that these questions, some are framed positively, negatively, pro, counter social behaviors. So, if it's like a Likert scale for each one, you end up with some sort of average, that won't be a data point that would be useful, right? So, I'm wondering how this is reported and whether, like, so for example, if my son is both engaged and distracted simultaneously, would that come up as some sort of weird average between those or would we be able to pinpoint? Just wondering how this is reported when it's, sometimes both will end up being true at the same time. I mean, each one is actually really important. Like what would my kids look like? Would I be able to tell if it ends up being on the report card, like really targeting in like, hey kid, you really got to work on that? Is it all going to be mushed together?
Yeah, so, so one, you do have the opportunity to, to break, break them out by social behavior, academic behavior and emotional behavior, so.
Yeah, I see that.
Those can be broken out in the reporting side of it as well. So, I don't know if I'm, I'm not understanding the other part of the question.
I'm just asking like, how's it going to look? Can I see an example of how it looks when it's reported, like first, like a example of trial? I think each one will look like it'll either have never, sometimes, often, almost always.
Yeah, this is what the, the teacher would, would see when they're doing it and ultimately this is then translated into really a nationally like a norm-referenced score that's going to say.
That's what I'm concerned about. That's what I'm wondering, will the score attempt to combine each category in a way that loses, was it? Like, what part of these? I'm just interested in whether combining some of these social behaviors.
Chris, let me, can I ask a question slightly differently? I think what Mary's asking is, so let's say, this isn't on a number, but let's say her kid got a score of two on social behavior, how does she know what that means? How does she know whether the, the strength was in temper outburst or the, the struggle was in disruptive behavior? Like, if, if all of those are assessed and then that's just averaged together, how is it descriptive for an individual parent?
Yeah, yeah. And I don't want to rush to an answer on that because I would, I don't want to say what the parent portal is going to report to you or not, but certainly I think that's something that we could bring back to the, you know, social emotional board committee and kind of get a little bit more in-depth or even to the committee here if we want to see how that's reported out or broken out for a parent.
For two reasons, for parents and teachers, the usefulness and then for reporting in national data, which is helpful, we would all agree, but then inconsistency across schools and districts, you're going to end up having less use for data of course, if you don't really know what.
So, I may be misunderstanding, but I think it would be helpful maybe for us to see the actual scoring items, like and how they're scored, because I think if you're a never in arguing, but an always in distractedness, are the numbers assigned such that they would correlate the score? I know what you're asking, but I think, so if we saw the actual data that, how it's collected, I think that would answer the question, because I'm sure it's factored in there to tease that out, like whether zero to four in the arguing and then four to zero is assigned as the score in the more positive, does that make sense?
That's essentially my question.
Yeah, I think that it's probably answered in seeing the actual tool maybe.
I would imagine it would be, I don't think somebody who developed this tool would think about that.
Yeah, correct, correct, absolutely. And so, yeah, I, I would like to, if I'm going to break that or explain it, I'd kind of like to have the full context to be able to do that, you know, and I certainly can do that.
We can bring that back, we can certainly bring that back to a future meeting.
Yeah.
Scoring at the middle school, that all classroom teachers are scoring every student? So, there could be seven scorers or is?
No, great question. Just, this show- Just this year when we piloted it, we did just our ELA teachers because they see every student. So really, one, with SABR's, you don't do it until six weeks into the year, so it gives you a personal opportunity to get to know students, but we really identified ELA teachers as doing it because they see every student, so that will probably be our path next year as well.
So I'm just going to, I'm thinking of the student who, that is not their strength, but boy, they are really strong in math and science and you could see two very, very different, if two different teachers were filling it out. I just, at middle school, I just feel like, you know, the 43 minutes of one, I mean, I understand, you know, that's a block, so it's a little bit longer, but you know, I think of, I go back and think of some of my students that that was like really not their strength, but boy, were they so strong in other areas. We could get a really almost distorted picture.
You know, I think, I think it's a valid point and I would bring us back to, and even when we worked with our teacher teams on the training on this, is that this is, it's a screener, it's still what we would call almost a temperature check, right? That would indicate we look further on a student, right? So maybe we do have a student that comes out as some risk, we don't just take that and immediately have to respond with a bunch of interventions, we want to look at their academic progress, we want to look at, do they ever connected adult? We have a PLC structure in place for those teachers to talk and say, are you seeing this? You know, I'm the only one who puts out, so I think we have enough layers in place to defend against that because certainly there are those variables that come into play and we see this just as one piece. Can it be valuable? Yes, but can that happen? Sure.
And then one more question, I mean, Susan, regards to, in regards to this, how are we letting parents know concerns, like if they're falling into that some category or that high category? Are we bringing that to parents' attention or what are we doing with that?
Yeah, so certainly this year was a pilot, right? But even as we move forward, we would do that and I think two pieces, one, for our students that fall into that some risk or high risk category, right? We have a data review and an individual problem solving process already at our buildings, right? That happens on the teacher and student support staff side of it, and then there's a parent notification side of that as well, especially if we're intervening for a student. So I think, one, the answer to that is yes. The second side of that is we're going to have a parent communication portal next year for all these pieces. So I think that's going to happen in multiple ways that parents would be brought on board.
I have a question on emotional wellness, in terms of really just essentially around privacy. How are the students identified and then is there, do the parents have to consent to kids being counseled or helped if they're hospitalized? And even where it says hospitalizations for mental health reasons, do we always know?
So first question is, do parents have to consent for us to talk at the school level, like a social worker or counselor with them?
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly, one, for consistent services to be provided, parents have to give consent as a touch point or in a crisis piece, right?
Yeah.
We have the ability to respond to that student.
Of course, yeah.
But obviously, we're bringing parents in for continuity of counseling or social work, there's a parent consent side of it. Second question, I believe, was really around the hospitalization side of it. Typically, we do know why a kid is hospitalized outside of school, right? So typically, we want to have an open relationship with the parent and it's beneficial for the parent, but mostly for the kid, for us to be communicating with that outside provider, right? So we have continuity of services, so we understand the root and reasoning why, right? Because many times that hospitalization is incoming as a result of our referral, but many times it could be a home referral. So typically, we do know and we do our best to connect and work with families on that, but certainly the family has the ability or right to share that or not, not share that piece.
Yeah, of course. And then around that, when, if there's a kid that's been hospitalized and now they're working with them, how's that information kind of controlled and passed along? Like if, you know, if it's a high school junior, does every teacher know? Is it just the, you know, the behavior counselor? How does that?
That's a great question, because certainly protecting the confidentiality piece is really important. So really, it's information for people who would be relevant for, to benefit the student, right? So certainly if a student's transitioning back, many times they're going to have an individual plan that's going to help them to transition back and certainly the teachers that are teaching that student typically need to know that. So it would be appropriate or relevant for them to know it. It may not be appropriate for somebody who doesn't teach the same, that grade level or that subject piece, to have that information and at that point, that person should not have that information. So it is streamlined and that's probably one of the benefits actually to, you know, aside from having one central person, it's controlled, right? The information streamlined.
I have one question. Speaking a little bit to Brad's question about having specific targeted SCL lessons, so I haven't been maybe well educated enough, I was going to say convinced, that the use of advisory time at the middle school level, like taking that time away from academics is necessary, maybe, but I do think that some of those targeted SCL lessons occur during that time, from what my seventh graders have. But then how come we don't have it at all for middle schools? Like, do we, have we, do we have any data from use of that time in improving connectedness with students? Do, are we planning to?
Yeah, we, one, we have our middle schools in specifically at Monroe that have collected some teacher and student survey data on that. I think the, probably the broader evidence of that is going to be our connectedness information and academic data. Why do not all of our schools do that? I will, I will tell you, one, that is one way that those schools chose to, you know, at the building level, some of the things that they were seeing with students to address some of the behavioral, academic, social, social needs that they saw, right? So that's a structure that they implemented that we gave them the autonomy to do so from a structural piece.
Do we know if it's working?
I don't have a definitive answer for you right now, but certainly.
I didn't hear that question. What was your last question?
Oh, is it, do we know if it's working?
Gotcha.
Like if taking that advisory time is helping solve, provide what those two schools feel like?
Sure, yeah. And so, go ahead, Chris, you can.
Yeah, what I was going to say, we will have information on that. I think monitoring is that working, identifying the data that we would have, right, from that is staff, you know, survey piece, connectedness information, but to be honest, this would be the first full year of that advisory that we would have to kind of weigh that against. So we're still almost in a baseline stage. I know Monroe had started one year and then we were cut off last year not being a full year. So with some of these pieces, we're also looking at a baseline piece as well. So I think, one, we'll have information to say, here are some of the positive outcomes we've had, but to say, is it improving learning outcomes? Is it improving connectedness? We've got to look probably at the total picture and also probably have a year, over year, picture of the programming, right?
I don't want to lose sight of the fact that certainly in the perspect, from the perspective of the professionals at the building who put that into place, they feel strongly that it's working. So I don't know that if you ask Mr. Buck to distill it into a metric to say, prove that it's working, I think it'd be very difficult to do, but certainly their response and feedback in terms of, I think, their ability to address what they have deemed to be some kind of high touch point needs with kids they felt very strongly about.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It's great to have a discussion.
Yeah, thanks. Which we can then roll right into our second discussion. So for the second discussion, I'm going to actually encourage you to take two pieces of paper out at the same time. The first, just for a point of reference, would be the draft strategic plan, kind of one pager, and then the second being this bigger packet, right, that has a couple of different, different colors on it. So what we're bringing to you tonight really for discussion and review is, and I don't even want to call it a draft of our dashboard, because this is not the way that the dashboard is ultimately going to look in consumable format. There's a whole lot more text on here because for each of the metrics at least that we've identified correlated to the major strategies in the strategic plan, we wanted to give the board a little more context on why we've brought out these particular points. So we're just going to go kind of by the area that they appear on here and so we start in this, this kind of bigger sheet of paper with the metrics that we've identified that correspond with the learning acceleration and assessment piece. So Melissa, I'm going to hand it over to you first.
Okay, hopefully, there we go. All right, so as Dr. Schuler mentioned, the first, I'm going to actually walk you through the first 11 metrics that correlate to two strategies that are listed here on Vision 2026, and that is learning acceleration and balanced assessment. So we paired those two together very intentionally because they complement one another. You need to have high quality assessments to inform the learning program that you have. And so for the board and for community, a reminder on what learning acceleration is. Learning acceleration is about going forward. It is about teaching grade level standards and content and it is about integrating past skills and concepts that are addressed and revisited, but within the context of what you're currently teaching. It is very different than remediation. Remediation is about going back and about past skills and concepts that are often taught in isolation. Sorry, I'm catching my breath here for a moment. Balanced assessment is a term that we're using because it really talks about a comprehensive assessment system. So this is about making sure that our school system has layers of assessment. So first and foremost, we know that our schools need to have in our classrooms, need to have high quality classroom assessments. Those have to inform the day to day, unit by unit decisions that our teachers make, but also we knew that we need interim assessments. So those are the assessments that we do give three times a year. And then finally, we know we have summative assessments or evaluative assessments. And so when you look at the dashboard example here that we have prepared for you, you can see, I'm going to start with that pink box, those pink boxes. And so those pink boxes are all about English language arts. And some feedback that we did receive from our community was that it would be beneficial that that data was broken out by level. And so you can see that we have listed that for K1, 25, 68 and high school. And so the assessment data that we would be using would be FastBridge. Dr. Salaghi spoke to this earlier. That's the assessment suite that we would be using in replacement to our district assessments. And so the FastBridge assessment system allows us to have data on our students that's both in the math and the reading space, but also in the SCL space and progress monitoring. And so as well, we would also be including achievement and growth data. When you look down, there's also the state assessment listed, and so that's IAR. That is our current state accountability assessment that we do report annually and are required to report annually per board policy. And then as well in the ELA space too, you're going to see for high school, what we have here is listed high school English language arts proficiency, and this is aligned to the college and career readiness indicators. And so this is actually a metric that is defined by the State Board of Education. You may remember, we have spoken to you about this before, specifically when we've talked about the college and career pathways, and we have talked about these metrics, so they're specifically defined here. So this is the last row, actually, in that pink box I'll draw your attention to in the middle of the page. So high school English language arts proficiency would be defined by multiple metrics. So that could be students who take an advanced placement exam and have a score of a three or higher. It could be our students who take an AP course and have a grade of an A, B or C. Could be they take a dual credit English course and have a grade of an A, B or C. A transitional English course, a grade A, B or C. And as a reminder, the transitional English course is the course that, we don't currently have this course, a part of our course catalog, it's still being developed at the state level, but that's the course that would be offered for our students so that they could not, avoid taking a remedial course when they enter into college, so they could enter right into credit bearing courses. The other indicator would be the ACT score of at least an 18 in English or a 22 in reading and then an SAT score of 540. Students would need to meet one of those criteria. So that defines what we are looking at in the English language arts space. If you drop down into the blue boxes, those would be for math and they're really a mirror of English language arts. And so whatever we've outlined there in the English language arts space, you would see a mirror of that in the math space. So that includes breaking up that data by the different levels, K1, 25, 68, high school and also the growth data. I did also want to mention, with FastBridge being a replacement for our district assessment, we do plan to bring a more comprehensive report to the board in May that does give the board more specific information about FastBridge. The, if you drop down there into the green, I want to draw your attention to the first row that's really going along with the pink and the blue boxes on your document, because this is also tied to that idea of learning acceleration and balanced assessment. And this is studying the PSAT to SAT growth. This was a metric that sat on your dashboard currently and unfortunately, we were unable to ever report this out because of the pause in testing in 2020. This year, our 2022 SAT data will actually be the baseline year that we will be able to use along with the 2018 PSAT grade eight data. So we'll actually be able to report out for the first time that growth data for the Board of Education. Underneath there, now we're starting to talk about a few additional strategies on the Vision 2026 document, and that is not only learning acceleration, but also the idea of ensuring our students are prepared for those post-secondary opportunities. So you're going to see actually three familiar metrics to the board. Freshman on track, this is a metric that we have continued to track and I've reported to the board. Graduation rate and lastly, advanced coursework. So this item right here, advanced coursework, that's in the darker blue, we've actually decided to broaden the definition of what we would consider advanced coursework, to go beyond simply AP and dual credit coursework, but actually to also include the percentage of students that are earning an industry recognized credential. This really aligns with our goals for career pathways and we also felt that it certainly deserved the recognition that it does have in the definition of advanced coursework and preparing our students for their future. So that is an overview of all of the different metrics that we have really designed to align with multiple. with multiple strategies that sit there on Vision 2026. Once again, it's for the learning acceleration strategy, balanced assessment, and the post-secondary opportunities.
Just one quick comment on there. So there's a couple things in particular on here that you've not seen before on a previous dashboard. One, at the K-8 level, we've not included state test scores on the dashboard. And we had a fairly lengthy conversation actually with CAC this year, as we were looking at the dashboard and explored the question, right? The challenge, the rationale in the past, why the board has not relied on that state metric, is A, we've never had good trend data. So every couple of years, that assessment changes, and it kind of wipes out any of the trend opportunity. But on the flip side of it, it is what ISB uses in public district and school report cards. And so I think there's some disconnect, certainly in the eyes of the public understandably, if ISB is using a metric that they're evaluating schools on in a public report card and we're not sharing the data. So that is the reason why we included it now. Again, I think very likely in the next couple of years, that state assessment is going to change again. ISB is looking at their assessment, it's going to kind of wipe all the previous trend information out. I don't personally, while I know there are different perspectives on it, I don't think that the percentage of students that are meeting and exceeding on the ISB state test is reflective of the percentage of students that are actually functioning at grade-level academic content. So I think it's a misleading metric personally, but it is what the state is using, and I think in that vein, to at least track the trend information is useful.
And I'll add on to that too, Dr. Schuler. Because it is something that we are required to report out per board policy, and it was always something that was included as part of that October presentation with the other dashboard components, it really just did seem to make sense that we would include that as part of that dashboard. And to what Dr. Schuler is saying as well, about the data being reflective of the percentage of students across our state, in our school district, meeting, exceeding, it's really important to note that the state assessment has a very high cut score, and that presents a lot of challenges with that state data.
Then the second piece that is new, especially with local assessment or FastBridge, is the growth element. So again, we've always reported the percentage of students that are attaining a certain level of performance on our local assessment. So I'm evaluating Brad as a third-grade student, are you meeting grade-level standards? But the second part of that is, hey, we know where you started at the beginning of the year, are you making a year's growth, right, as well? And so I think both are obviously critically important, that we want to know how our students are doing relative to grade-level performance, but we also want to know if students are coming in behind, are we accelerating, right, that performance to more than a year's worth of growth? If you're coming in above grade-level standards, are we still challenging you to continue to grow, right? And so that, really, two different metrics, but I think both important to say, hey, what percentage of students are performing at grade level, and what percentage of students are hitting their, kind of what you would consider to be typical growth within a year, right? They're making a year's worth of growth.
And I think we have mirrors at the different levels. So we have the achievement data that is being reported out at the K-8 space, and the growth data at the K-8 space. And then we have the definition of proficiency with English Language Arts and math being reported out, and the growth data being reported out through that PSAT to SAT. So if both levels were reporting out achievement and proficiency, but also growth.
Questions or comments on this section?
Melissa, will the FastBridge assessments stay constant? Like, will the assessments not change from year to year?
That is a district-purchased system, and that is our plan, to keep that, is our constant assessment. And to the point we discussed earlier about having trend data, that allows us to have trend data. And this is the benefit as well of reporting this data and having an interim assessment on top of the state data, because often, what the difficulty with the state data is, is that that's a once-a-year assessment, and we receive that, those results, very, very late. The FastBridge data, it allows us, and that system allows us to provide that testing three times a year. And so it's certainly constant multiple times a year, and is a system that we have selected.
At least what I've heard is the possibility of the state going to a three-times-a-year test, are we looking at that being concerning?
I can actually speak to that. So the state, I actually recently, in their most recent state Board of Education meeting, the Center for Assessment reported out the state findings from the survey, but also the focus groups that I had the opportunity to actually participate in. And that, the idea of having a through-assessment overwhelmingly was not supported through both the survey and the focus groups, and that was what was reported. To ISB was the idea that that's not currently something that the feedback is suggesting would be something that would be supported.
All of our advocacy groups are pushing very strongly on that, to say, you know, the state. So I do think, and understandably, the state looks at part of that as an equity initiative, because they see some school districts without the capacity to do what Melissa can articulate that we can do through the use of FastBridge, to which I think we've said, hey, then support the districts that need that help, right? If a district needs a help with a three-year assessment, because they don't have the funds to pay for it, they don't have the expertise like Melissa and Julie Osimkowski and the team, then put the resources towards supporting the districts that need it, and for accountability purposes, make that test as short as you can possibly make it to meet the accountability piece, and then let us use the local data that we have. So I do think the state superintendent is very, it is one of her initiatives that she's very passionate about, but I think she's hearing pretty strongly from the field that that's not a statewide interest to have, you know, significant.
And the Center for Research reported out to the state superintendent, State Board of, multiple school districts have systems like FastBridge that we have, or other local assessments, that they utilize, or interim assessments, that they very much value and have trend data to use.
Question on the, these IAR percentages, what does that represent?
That's the percentage of students from this past year that met or exceeded on the state assessment. And we do have to remember too, that dataset was somewhat incomplete, because it was, we weren't mandated to have 100% participation.
So that metric, the FastBridge metric, is going to be the same metric, grade-level achievement?
Yeah, grade level, yes.
So if they don't correlate, there's potentially an issue with the testing.
Yeah, they're not going to correlate. I'm going to tell you that right now, they're not going to correlate, because if you look at the way that our students, so again, there's two things for understanding. So IAR, right, when that test was PARC, became IAR. PARC has five levels of performance, right? There are five performance levels. Illinois made a decision to say only the top two performance levels, a score of 4 or 5 on PARC, now IAR, correspond to meeting or exceeding state standards. I don't know the exact detail, but I have a sense of pretty close from what I've heard, right? You would really, in a nationally-normed test, have to be above the 70th percentile nationally, that's almost the top quartile, to meet grade-level standards on Illinois state assessment. It is out of whack.
So the 42% is misleading?
I think that it is misleading.
Yes, I've often seen the correlation to be as high as 77 to 80th percentile nationally to be at the meets level on the Illinois assessment.
Is the FastBridge metric standardized as part of that package?
Yes.
Whatever gets reported. So, because, we should expect the FastBridge grade-level numbers to be much higher?
Yes, I think you will see the FastBridge numbers to be much higher.
But how that is measured is defined by the program?
It is defined by that assessment tool. So again, we are purchasing that assessment tool. They standardize the scoring and align it to learning progressions, right, and they also nationally-norm the results as well. So we're not defining those cut scores, so it's not just Melissa Murphy that's saying, hey, I want to like pad the performance of students by saying, here's our cut score, that is defined by that, the research that sits behind that assessment suite.
Yeah, so while it's district-purchased, it is a standardized.
Correct. We're not writing the questions, we're not scoring the results. It is another version of, kind of a more standardized assessment that is administered locally in a much shorter window of time.
With the IAR, is there a way, if at or above is like the 4 and 5, is there a way to get the data for 3, 4, and 5, like that percentage?
Yeah, absolutely, we could get that for you, because Julie Osimkowski tracks that, and yeah, I don't want to misspeak to the number, but we have a pretty solid group of kids that are sort of in that cusp 3 range. And again, when PARC was developed, there were actually other states that adopted PARC at the same time, and they set their cut score to say a 3, 4, or 5, is meet state standards. So that really was just a completely arbitrary state decision, but yes.
Does Illinois do the same thing for the SAT? Don't they have a higher cut-off point?
Yeah, the state does, yeah, yeah. Their cut score for meeting is higher than the College Board cut score is for...
So I think it might be meaningful to have that 3, 4, 5.
Yep, we can do that. I think we shared a version of that with CAC, didn't we?
We sure did, and I would also say, the quick answer is, if you go to the school report card, you're able to look at that information and break that down. I'm also going to speak to the cut scores. The state moved from PARC to locally IAR, but they didn't do the research in changing the cut scores, so those same cut scores that were PARC do still apply. IAR.
One more question. I'm curious why the addition of an option for the grade as being meeting, so...
Proficiency at the high school level?
Yes.
Yes, this data is actually defined by redefining readiness, which is a set of research that did come out, and it was with the Post-Secondary Workforce Act. And so that, this criteria right here is criteria that was set by that group to define what is competency in terms of proficiency for English Language Arts and math. So those aren't specific metrics that we determined, we're utilizing that research.
Yeah, but I think part of the answer though is, so dual-credit, a dual-credit class, which is a college-level class, generally does not have like a final assessment like an AP exam. So again, I think the belief is that if you are taking a college course, what is a college course, and you are successfully navigating through that course in terms of your performance, research would suggest that's a really strong indicator that you're college-ready, if you've taken a college-ready course, and college coursing done well, right?
Intuitive sense.
Yeah.
In that I agree with, but for the math, if you, so if you were a student who received a C in Algebra II, you would be considered college-ready?
Most of the research does say that Algebra II is that gateway to be successful post-secondary.
So my only concern with using the grade as the cutoff for that particular class, or maybe the transitional math class, is we've had some discrepancy in where we're at with high school grading, and allowing, not allowing a student to have anything more than a 60%. So I'm not sure if a C would always be reflective of being ready. I guess I feel like we would almost be adding, we would expect to come out with a really high percent, or, so a student could get an A, or I'm sorry, a C in Algebra II, and have a 500 on the SAT, but still be considered college-ready. I mean, maybe that's a different discussion for high school grading and that.
I'm also going to say, in June, we are going to compile this data for the first time, and we're going to have baseline data, so that's also going to be helpful to this conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you want to move, Chris, go ahead, SEL?
I just have one, oh, a question and a quick follow-up. When is the last time the mission and vision were written or revised? Do we know?
The district's mission and vision statement? I'd have to go back and look at it, it's codified in board policy, so it probably has a reflective date there. I'm guessing it's probably been about 10 years.
We didn't rewrite it, but I want to guess maybe 2015, we looked at it in a closed session, I think it was, closed session. I remember sitting around the table at the SSC and looking at those specific words, what was missing, but we didn't go through a whole process to rewrite it or redevelop it, but it was looked at, I want to guess 2015, 2016 maybe? Were you, I think you were here.
We did a quick review on it, we haven't done a thorough rewrite on it.
Right, it was a, let's look at it and come back to the next.
So, because the reason I ask is what I appreciate most about the centerpiece of Portrait of a Graduate, because it's thoroughly drawn from the community, we know that Chris has made that very clear. So it's clear that the community values collaboration, communication, which is inherently, like by definition, not just an individual, personal endeavor. Problem-solving, you could go either way, you know, depending on what kinds of problems you wish to solve. But I think there's becoming some level of, I think our community is moving towards a different vision for the people, the graduates, that is becoming more incongruent with the vision and the mission, because it seems that both are really looking at individual, personal development. And then the vision being, we want to do a really good job at this, so that we do a really good job at this. Like, the end goal is doing a really good job, which is great, but both don't seem to reflect our community's vision going forward, of being more collective, more of some sort of, to what end, benefit for society or for the world? And I wonder whether we can consider at some point ways in which, you know, collaboration and personal development, individual goals and collective goals can be integrated, a real cohesive vision of to what end? Not tonight, obviously. But I think, the reason I'm saying this, not my idea, that's what I see when I look at what the community says we're looking for. We're looking for individual people who excel at their individual highest levels, which is beautiful, but then to what end? I think we're there, therefore, what, to what, and just look at the history of why public education exists in the first place, it's so that we all can...
Yeah, I will say that when the mission and the vision were written, that was also through a very collaborative, community-based, so this was not written by the Board of Education or just a small group of people. It was written through kind of a similar visioning exercise that we did through Portrait of a Graduate.
Yep, so right, at that time, that might have been... Yep, so right at that time, that might have been the community's goals for public education, which are beautiful. But I wonder whether it looks like what we've come up with in 2022 seems to be pushing more towards that collaborative piece. That I wonder whether the community might wish to move the mission and vision towards that. I don't know, but it seems, that's what I see in what was, came out of the Portrait of a Graduate exercise.
I'm wondering, Mary, if as we adopt Portrait of a Graduate and we kind of see what comes out of that, will we organically see mission, vision maybe shifting, you know, in a way? You know, we might want to see what that looks like? I don't know. I'm just, with the Portrait of a Graduate, see what kind of comes out of that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Just a quick reference. I always look at the we believe statements more so than the mission and the vision. I find those more informative and directional to us.
On the dashboard here, I'm going to move us into the social emotional learning part of areas recommended for the board dashboard. One new area would be the Trusted Adult Relationship Survey to be reported. You obviously heard about that this evening, and so you understand the reasoning and the research and the data behind it and how we collect it. I will say that Five Essentials used to be a part of this where we could have collected data. However, they've adjusted the questions that they're asking around student connectedness. So we really felt that our own Trusted Adult Survey would measure that student connectedness measure. The activities and co-curricular participation has that as a dashboard item for you. So certainly, we know the benefits of that. We know how that enhances the student experience. The summer would be what I would consider actually a new baseline, because again, having really adjusted years, our real last data point goes back to the 18, 19 school years. So to me, we're at a new point of collecting a baseline in that area. And then attendance has always sat on your dashboard as well. You know, kids need to be in school. Students attending school are more likely to demonstrate academic success. You know, and as we move into the future, there are other areas within our SCL assessment framework that we can, will continue to report out on. That's the pink sheet that I've given you this evening. And there may be interest in monitoring those pieces as well. I also want to make the comment too, though, that I also see social emotional learning really as a student support service that should enhance the student learning experience in all those metrics that Mrs. Murphy just spoke about, right? Like if we're really doing the things that I spoke about tonight, well, we should see improved academic outcomes as well, right? So I think there's an accountability end from the social emotional side in the program we've talked about to enhance learning as well.
Any questions? I'll answer Dr. Slade.
All right, I think I'm up next. So HR, one of our main focuses, and we're in the middle of the start of a hiring season right now, is to make sure we hire, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality staff. So teacher retention is one of the pieces that we look at. We want to make sure our teacher retention is high. I believe last year when I presented at the end of the hiring, we're at 93%. That's a good level. We want to remain around that percentile due to the fact that we have people that come here, they retire. We also have teachers that move out. We also have sometimes when you hire staff, they may not be up to the level that we have. So we also want to make sure we could turn that over as well. So teacher retention is something we look at all the time. If you flip to the next page, we also want to look at principal retention. And for like the past six years, we've lost the average about one administrator a year. So we're right about 98 to 99%. High-level principal retention, just like teachers, keeps stability in the district. We're in the middle of hiring right now, and I've been in four different interview sessions. And what I hear about our district is destination district. And that's, you know, that's what I hear from people that are wanting to come into our district. I still hear that from people. So those two pieces is getting the right principals, getting the right teachers is really important for us. Next is percent of positions filled. So we've been tracking that this year. This year, I think, as we've spoken at multiple board meetings, it is becoming harder to get classified staff to fill positions. We're still filling the majority of our certified staff positions. But what we're trying to do is when we see positions we struggle with, we work with the union, we work with teachers, we work with support staff to find ways that we could still fill those positions. Some of the positions that have been open this year have been open almost all year in the classified section. And we are always looking for new ways to combat not just what we're dealing with in CUST 200, but the nation is dealing with a number of people that don't want to work. So we are always trying new ideas to fill those positions. And then last is our hire, develop, and retain diverse faculty and staff with our growing underrepresented group of students that have been growing throughout the district. We're also tracking our hiring of diverse, not just staff, but certified educators. So what we do is we track every hire, and our goal is to attract and try and get more diverse candidates to apply for our position. So it is something that we're working on. I will say, when we talk about career pathways, I do feel Grow Your Own Teacher program is going to be a great way to really make big dents into getting more diverse teaching staff, but we will continue to bring in as many diverse candidates as we can. And those are the demographics we look at, and the more we do well at those areas, we have some baseline data that we've shared with the board in the past. Usually for us, it's October or November. We share that when we're done with the hiring season. So those are our four categories. Did you consider, in our current teacher contract, there's the professional development opportunities, right, for teachers? Did you consider some metric as the percentage of teachers that are engaging in that opportunity to continue with their own education and bring that learning back to the classroom?
Are you speaking to micro credentials or just getting their?
I didn't remember.
Masters, yeah.
Exactly.
We track micro credentials, and every year we've done it, we've had an increased amount of teachers using it. And we continue to add more and more professional learning for teachers. So we've seen it continue to grow, and we obviously have an extension for next year for the teacher contract. But as we look into negotiations, we will be looking at, one of the pieces I put as being competitive, the professional learning is a big piece of what came out of the last negotiation.
I'm wondering if it makes sense to have an actual metric that looks at percentage of students, or teachers that are actually engaging in that, taking advantage of that opportunity?
I can give that to the board. That's not hard to do, because we just ended the deadline for this past year. So we have it since we started micro credentials, and I can get that information to the board. What would it be valuable to track? Would it be valuable to track? One thing to share with, or that with you? A portion of our menu of professional development, I don't know if you pulled that out in isolation, how reflective it would be of like all staff engaged in ED, because you also have teachers who are master's degree programs, you have teachers that are pursuing other professional growth paths that.
Assessment question?
Yeah. Does the teacher retention percentage, is that, so the 7% that have left, has that been voluntary? Like are we including that 7% of those who we did not invite back?
The state average is around 87.1, so we're higher than the state average. We had a lot of retirees last year, if you remember.
Your question specifically, yes. That is the ISB metric, and it is accounting for anybody that's leaving for any reason. Retirement, we fired you, you left on your own, just anybody who was here last year and is not here in the following year.
Thank you.
You got it.
The 40 open positions, out of how many is that?
We have, I don't have the exact amount of employees we have.
1,200 or something like that.
It's more than 2,000.
More than 2,000.
I can tell you, just because we're doing the Educated Morale Survey, I think we sent that invitation to about 2,100.
Yeah, so it may look like a lot, but it's, we're in a pretty good, we're in a pretty good space compared to other school districts, but we're going to continue to try to find different ways to be creative, to fill positions that we used to be able to fill pretty easily.
Isn't that 40, those 40 positions minus the five, so the 35 positions tend to be teacher aides?
Mostly classified staff, yes.
Question on that, if they're going to be filled, though?
Sometimes they're filled and sometimes they're not. So what we've been trying to do as a district is look at positions that we can't fill and look at different ways that we could fill maybe those roles in a different approach.
I guess I'm just thinking for the metric, is that, that going to end up being really important for the dashboard?
I tried to put where we were right now as a number. It varies throughout the year. When we start in September and October, it's a higher number, and it goes down as we go. And then there's different points throughout the school year that it increases or decreases.
Mary, come back to your question, though. I personally, I do think it's a valuable metric, because I guess when I look at that metric, I'm assuming point in time, beginning of the school year, what are you seeing in terms of open positions? So yes, to answer your question, we will do everything we can to find some way to make sure we've cobbled together the resource and the opportunity. But the bigger that number is, the more difficult that is going to be, right? So at some point in time, if you really started as a, I think as a Board of Education, started to see that number really grow at the beginning of the year, I think it's going to start impacting, obviously, quality of service for students. So I think it's a pretty valuable metric just to understand, you know, are we, are we kind of trending up right at the beginning of each school year to indicate, you know, what, because every one of those numbers means we're having to do something to problem-solve a service we're supposed to be providing to a student, right?
Any other questions?
The fiscal health side of things, the dashboard currently just has two metrics on it, your balance budget and your fund balance. And obviously, the latter is based on policy, so that's second and third, but we've added in for just overall consideration, one, four, and five. So the first one is, if you recall, every year now for the past few years, both on the financial side and the facility side, we put together that overview document, which we not only use as a baseline of what has occurred most recently in the prior few years, but it's an outward communication piece that goes out to the public. So it provides us with a nice, and the public with an overview of where things stand from the financial end and then also the facilities end. And I think if we're going to hold ourselves, and you're going to hold me responsible for ensuring that we're doing a great job of communicating what is happening both in the financial space and in our facility space, that we look at using this document or this document or something similar to it to make sure that we do have a consistent communication piece that can be used and previewed and reviewed year over year for the public as a whole. Balance budget, obviously, it is what it is. That's the overall expectation. Fund balance, that's the policy that we have in place. And then we get into the financial profile score. That's a score that comes directly from the state. It is included in your AFR, but then it's codified by the state after the state reviews all financial data that has been submitted. And because it is a state metric, I think it's important to tell the public where we're at from a financial profile score perspective. It doesn't, the number itself doesn't have a specific meaning, but the subsets of what's within that overall profile score does talk about financial health and where specifically the district is at. And then lastly, while this does not come up too often, really, it only happens when we're issuing debt or where we are amending debt because we're refinancing to save dollars, our bond rating. Bond rating is the second highest rating that is available in terms of how things are scored in that platform. And considering that we have some debt that is coming off the board and we're looking at a future that might be a little bit different in terms of what our debt is in term, overall, in terms of what debt we have, I think it's important for the public to understand, at least on the debt profile side of things, that rating is a distinguishing characteristic of bond creditworthiness in the financial marketplace. And considering where we're ranked, I think it's an important aspect to at least with consistency when it happens, make sure the public understands what that means to us as a whole. A higher bond rating, plain and simple, means you pay less interest, and it gives you more capacity to either consider borrowing or to structure your borrowing in a way that may be more beneficial to you in the long run.
Dr. Oki?
Facilities Master Plan section, again, there's just one piece in here, that's the last one, that is part of the current dashboard, and that's the Facility Master Plan. But we've added a few other areas, again, to complement what we've talked about on the fiscal health side of things, so certainly the overview document. But I think now that we are in the midst of multiple years of adhering to and providing support and using our dollars, our fund balances in a way that the community asked us, is we report back what we're doing in all of our schools. So the Facilities Master Plan in and of itself is a huge document, and it talks about the district as a whole, but it doesn't necessarily dive into all the great things that we do on an annual basis, summer after summer. The Facilities Overview Document is a high-level perspective of what has happened, but these two other pieces, the capital projects complete, information really gets into what we're doing, and it can break down more definitive background for what has occurred recently. And then tying back into fiscal health, just like looking at the bond rating, what's our long-term debt schedule? That's a, not only is it a major financial understanding of where things are at, but it will certainly help the public take a peek into what we potentially could do on the facility side of things.
Comments regarding?
Really, just two final metrics that we had identified in advance. One, in the community engagement space, is we do annually participate in Five Essentials. That is the state-sponsored school climate, culture, school improvement type of survey. And just as a reminder for the board, right now, all ISB is tracking as a part of the report card is actually participation data on Five Essentials. There are a few elements. When Melissa talks in just a few minutes about a new tool called the Equity Continuum that the state has, Five Essentials factors into that as well. But again, we administer that every year as a part of the state survey. We think we need to make sure that that is a part of our public reporting. We previously, when it was coming to the board, we actually reported it on the question level. So those of you that might remember that last report, which was a few years ago when we had the data, we actually dug into specific questions that we felt gave us the most helpful information in terms of understanding kind of the instructional climate and culture in our buildings, and we reported it on that level. Five Essentials does give you kind of some higher-level almost ratings by school, like it ultimately gives you a kind of a summative piece that is supposed to describe how organized the school is to get better, right, in the instructional space. We didn't find that summative piece nearly as useful as the question-level piece, but we're actually in the process of going back to kind of relook at that and see, at least from our perspective, what we think would be most useful in the Five Essentials space. But I just wanted to acknowledge that I think in some form or function, it needs to be a part of the dashboard, probably with a little more conversation when we get this year's data back on how the board and district collectively feel it's most useful to us as a tracking tool. Equity, you want to do the equity continuum?
Sure. So the actual last page, the yellow-colored cells speak to something that will be new on the state report card this year. It's called the Equity Journey Continuum. And there's actually a document in your green folders that gives you more information. So this is something new that ISB has developed as a part of their strategic plan. And so the intent of this is that it is utilizing data that we already report to the State Board of Education on a yearly basis. And so the intent of this is that it is utilizing data that we already report to the State Board of Education on a yearly basis. And it's really intentional to allow school districts to really describe the access to the opportunities, resources, and support from that equity lens. So on your strategic plan document, under the balanced assessment system strategy, there is a tactic that describes leveraging data through an equity lens. And so this is really that vehicle that we would utilize to do that. And so the Equity Learning or Journey Continuum is actually going to report out data from multiple sources that you can see listed here on the one side of the dat, where it says data elements. So they're clustering data by student learning. And you're gonna see in that space, there's anything from the kids readiness assessment we give to our kindergarteners, IAR, SAT, eighth grade algebra, advanced coursework. And then the middle is learning conditions, so you're gonna see some of the data there that is being analyzed as around discipline data. It's also, as Dr. Schuler spoke to, is that five essentials survey, so the climate information sits in that middle category. And then as well, the last category is called elevating educators. And so this has to do with a lot of the data that Dr. Kyle spoke to. If you flip over the page, the other important element to understand is how is this data reported? It's gonna be reported along a continuum. And so there's four steps in that continuum, so for each of those three areas, schools will receive, you know, information on how they fall on that continuum. So a one means there's large gaps in equity, and a four means there's minimal gaps in equity. And I think the intent of this particular tool is really to be an opportunity for conversation and for reflection and for continued conversation around how we can continue to support students in programming.
It will be reported publicly for the first time in October of this year, correct?
That is correct.
Questions or comments regarding community engagement or the equity?
I do. I think I understand this, I just wanna make sure, the gaps in equity are along which axes? Like racial and ethnic lines, gender?
Yes, it, it's around special populations, which they define as students with disabilities and multilingual learners, and then also the racial demographic groups.
So like a 1.82 is somewhere in between one and two, but we don't know what, on what?
We actually do. We've been able to see a preview of that data, and we've been able to see for each of those elements. We've seen the equity score for each and every element. We've also seen that information by demographic groups as well. It's a preview at this point in time.
So on the dashboard, we're going to see where, what, do we really need twelve or something?
Yeah, on the dashboard.
You, you will not though. So the, the way that the state is reporting it, they're actually only reporting it in that aggregate by category. So, so the public will only see the three scores that you see on here. We can certainly do a deeper dive right at the, at the board level into what constitutes that 1.82 in, in student learning.
Can the public?
What's that?
Can the public do the deeper dive?
No, the public cannot do, I mean, only what we share with them at, at that point. They, they can only see the, kind of the data in the aggregate.
And only at the district level, it won't be reported out by school.
I have one more question on the community engagement. I think my concern here with this being the good data point, but the only data point, that being the five essential survey, I think, I think I've been reflecting, you know, it's a year ago, we joined the board, some of us. I think one of the things I've seen in the last year, trying to make sense of the community voice that I hear every day, and then what I see in the board seat, trying to reflect on the year. And one of the things I continue to see is a disconnect. And I'm wondering how to capture the possibility of a disconnect and the data that we use to inform what we're doing. And I do think this is important, I'm just proposing maybe something in addition. To really get into either, it's not just disaggregating this data point, there's something more to it. Because it's not just the disconnect, it's the experience of a disconnect, where you have families in our community who have perceptions of our district that we would not say that's good. Nobody around this table would say, no problem. And yet it persists. And I, and I would hope that the five essential survey would capture that, but I don't think it will. So what I'm wondering is what kind of data point will really capture? Some students and some parents feel this way, the perception of our district is one way. And then I see lots of good things happening. What kind of data point, I'm wondering, would really capture two very different stories that are being told about our district? Is there any possibility of including one more data point to community engagement?
There's always a possibility of including a data point, I guess let me reframe that as a question. You're bringing that data point forward, so what's your data point that's like guiding you to that disconnect?
So one, I mean, one thing I think about is, it's interesting to think about a data point, but I'd be interested more in like the qualitative piece, you know?
Which is, which is a data point, so that's why, yeah.
Yeah, I, I should support qualitative data. But it would look, to me, it would look something like, how are we centering the voices of the community members who are historically marginalized or something like that? I don't know that I'd use those words necessarily, but that's part of outreach, is intentional efforts. Just like with the student activities, it's saying, we're not just gonna provide activities with people who tend to show up. We're gonna do a little bit more. Same with relational mapping. The whole idea behind it is saying we're gonna go the extra mile, bridge these gaps we see. So I think this is something to do with how, what is the district doing to make sure that certain populations are being heard, responded to, in ways that, I'm not answering your question. It's something along the lines of capturing the stories.
In, in the way that I'm hearing it, I guess, again, I would, my view, right? Like I, I think when we want to improve things within the, the district, right, we do it on two levels, right? We do it through intentional strategy. Intentional strategy is not, not just the stuff that's on here, but, but when Chris does the deeper dive into the SEL plan, right, we're really getting into what is the specific strategy next year. So I'm not sure if I think what you're trying to capture is really something you're monitoring on the dashboard or something you're trying to capture through when Erica brings forward the community engagement plan for the upcoming year. Is it that we're seeking to put in place a specific strategy to make sure that we are engaging with the, the kind of the entirety of our community, right? We're making sure that all voices that need to be providing feedback to us, for us, are doing so. That almost sounds more like a strategy than something that sort of has some semblance of a numeric or a, or a qualitative value that sits on a dashboard.
I think you could do it though. I think you could take your plan and put it out there on here along with filling it in with what happened, you know? We had fifty people show up for this, or we, you know, like something that, you know.
Is that a dashboard or is that a strategy? I mean, that sounds like a strategy to make, which, again, I'm not, I'm not disputing, but when, like, I, I guess, just my perspective and my perspective alone. So if the, if, if the board wishes to, to put onto the dashboard other kind of annual strategy plans that you want to monitor, we can put that on the dashboard to simply indicate every year we will do a community engagement plan and update that, you know, that community engagement plan. I, I see the dashboard truly as what are the specific, you know, metrics that are either, either numeric, quantitative metrics, or they're qualitative measures that can, can be distilled into something that every year you're monitoring that same data point over time, right, to, to see progress. And again, both are important, right? Like we would not want to only monitor the numbers and not be intentional on the, the strategy in the same way that we wouldn't want to only focus on strategy and say, it's not important to understand if student achievement is trending up or trending down, it's not, you know, so.
I don't know, I guess I, I look at it as, and I think to show the community, these are all the times we have, and these are the, what we've done to reach out. And we look at that every year and we see, did we increase our touch out there within the community? Have we, I don't know, like, I don't know if you can quantify that in, in a way, but I think that method, you know, I, I look at that every year very carefully, or, you know, and see like, okay, and I know we've used it before and said, you know, these things may not have been the most, best use of our time, so we're going to try this. And I don't know, I guess it's just, going back to Mary, are we touching many people? And is there a way we can use that? Because I, I look at this too, and I think the only thing we're monitoring for community engagement is five essentials, not much more than that.
So one of the tactics that we added to, from the initial Vision 2026 strategic plan, you'll see under the last section on the right side of organizational culture, we added that we would conduct a communications and community engagement audit to make sure that all stakeholders in our community feel informed, valued, and, and really gather their feedback and input on what are the, what are the best ways that we can communicate with you so that you feel engaged and informed, but that we can also on a regular basis hear from you. And so that is part of a four-year strategic plan, but is something that is a tactic to support our organizational culture, both internal and external, and our community engagement efforts is a tactic to support, I think, what you're talking about. And so that's not something that you would necessarily do on an annual basis, that then you could put on your dashboard to show, you know, the annual results of your, of your audit. But definitely something that we want to do over the next four years to support our communications and engagement efforts that will, I would hope then, drive our annual community engagement plan.
So it could, it could be very easily translated. The audit could then turn into an annual measurement of?
It could be, right? If there's something that comes out of the audit that then we say, hey, that's a, that's a data point we want to update every year, I, I could see something like that morphing into, you know, a, a piece. And again, last piece, right, I, I think if we do this well and communicate this well, right? The, the strategic plan is these two documents together. And, and again, I think it's, it's hard to see them integrated when they're on two separate pieces of paper. But I, but I think our, our, our challenge when these two elements come together, right, and, and how we portray it is that really they both together comprise the, the strategic plan. What, what we're intentionally doing in terms of strategy and focused on, and then what we're monitoring, right, every, every year. So I, I hear the point. If you're only looking at the dashboard, it looks like we're not monitoring a whole lot in the community engagement space, but then when you see the strategy, you know, paired with the five essentials piece, it's a whole lot more that we're actually doing and monitoring.
So you either measure how well you're implementing your plan, or you measure what percentage of the population, the community that you're actually engaging with. I don't know, I think the, the former is probably much more relevant and actionable to us because the percentage of students we're gonna, or percentage of, we're gonna see, oh, eight percent one year, eight and a half. Those are the numbers we're gonna get. See it all the time in the, in communities and public opinion research. Nobody's engaged. So the ability for us to measure how well we're implementing the plan, which would be something which would be in a board report, is probably more relevant.
I can follow up on that, I think. I think the question I'm asking, one is community engagement is important, so why just one metric kind of took her to this point? But the other is, an equity lens, taking an equity lens to the whole plan itself. So if you look at hiring of teachers, when we name diverse teachers specifically, that is, we're actually modeling, we're actually doing an equity plan, an equity lens on our whole plan. Already doing that because we're saying we have a problem in this area, and we're gonna specifically pull out that disaggregated data specifically because we see a problem. And so that's why I'm saying in community engagement, like when you identify a particular area of disengagement, pull it out so we can see it more clearly. But I do have a very quick, if it's okay, suggestion on that is I think, I think one of the, one of the reasons that there's, there's a gap that I do think could be measured or captured in some way. I've been thinking a lot about the kinds of data that doesn't get captured. And often that's in either microaggressions or in moments, like really small moments that happen either with a parent interacting with a front office staff or a child and a teacher. And these things are called microaggressions, you know, for a reason, because they're, they're numerous and they're hard to, to capture in any meaningful way and often are unresolved, but accumulate into a sort of terrible consequences. And so what I've seen in, in my workplace is the possibility of like a, like a biased response, like an incident form. We're heading in that direction, I don't know if we're heading in that direction, but an example of that would be drawing out like race-based bullying within the handbook. We're saying like bullying is really bad for student learning, and this kind of bullying has a particular negative consequence for everybody, so let's pull it out so we can see it more clearly. Some people have concerns over incident bias because we think we're just telling on each other left and right. But I know as a parent, if I had a form like that, that could go straight to people at this table, the district level, of saying, this is, this is a moment happened, I'm not trying to get anyone in trouble. I just want to be able to collect this kind of data that really harms kids. This is just a, this is just a, a teacher who, who, I don't want to say any examples, but something that just didn't feel quite right, being able to capture it. And, and then the important piece is how it was responded to, so that the parent or the child feels that the district responded and satisfied, right? Ideally, because that's what we'd want of any of our community members, except possible. And I do think that would really help bridge that gap, because oftentimes it's, it's not even, somehow it's just not captured in these surveys, but it's like moment, I mean, today, there's moment, many, many, many little moments where some people are just, they don't, you don't even know what to do anymore because they're so small. But finding some meaningful way to just sort of shoot those moments over to you guys and have a call back maybe or something? And then report it here.
Yeah. So I think there's two layers to that. One, I hear the intent in what you're saying. I, I would be very concerned in a school system this big if there's like a direct reporting piece from like parent just to this table, and that I think what it leaves out is actually of those at the building that really would be the, sort of the first responding element, sort of that chain of command.
I agree.
Element, but that, that probably conversation for, you know, second piece. But I, I think what I hear you saying, at least in terms of consideration moving forward, is some, some way of trying to capture like microaggression moments in the district?
And then how they responded to, and whether they were responding to some sort of satisfactory. Because the community engagement is a piece of thing, and then at the day.
Who would define satisfactory?
The, the student or the parent.
How that would be transferred to a dashboard?
Well, the, the way we, we do it at my workplace is that we have incidences, and then they move through, eventually those incidences are like funneled through like some sort of resolution, like every single one. Like, and so that, I'm just asking that, that would be how many incidences and were they appropriately resolved? And ideally those incidences would go up for a while, because it's like, we're measuring things we weren't measuring, and then down. That's what I would want to see.
I have a comment. I just, I think it's really important to understand what we're really trying to measure here. Because I, I hear you, but I, I'm also struggling to try to answer in my head, well, how is that community engagement? And I mean, I think what Brad said is, is, how are we doing versus the plan? And, you know, what's the definition? What are we looking for? Are we, were the sessions last week successful from a community engagement perspective compared to?
to the number of people we had sitting in this room for Portrait of a Graduate, or, you know, like, because sometimes you have these workshops and nobody, nobody comes. Um, so what, you know, is it number of people at a board meeting? Well, you know, then we might have had a good metric this year, because people were interested in a hot topic, but what are we really trying to measure? And so, I don't disagree with your intent or your hard on it, but I don't know how that is. What do we treat? It seems like what we ought to be measuring is, does the community have the opportunity to be heard? I don't know how we do that, but I think...
I would add in to say, does the community members feel that they are heard? But it's, it's, I think we're measuring our efforts of output, and do the community members experience that, right?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking, when I think community, I'm thinking broad. I think what you're saying is more specific, I think it's more like the culture of building? Like, I'm trying to understand what you're, what you're getting at, like wanting to measure...
Well, possibly the culture of the whole district, that's why it's the district dashboard, but the reason I'm locating it here under community engagement is because I know that there's a pretty strong feeling of frustration among certain subgroups in this district that could be addressed under this topic of...
Community broad, or specific events that are hap- specific situations that are happening in school? Like, that's where I'm, I'm having to disconnect with...
Broad, so district, so a district-wide data point that would capture across the whole district, what kinds of experiences continue to be harmful by members of our community, that be their students or their parents, that continue to create this disconnect between really good work going on and persistent experiences that are negative, trying to find a data point that would help close that gap, and help every member of our community feel that they belong here. So, some subgroups report, in my experience, lower satisfaction levels at sense of belonging. We all know what groups, obviously. You see what I'm saying?
I'm, I'm just trying to picture what that looks like, I'm struggling, I'm trying to picture what that looks like on here, it's such a subjective, like, like, how are we going to quantify that?
Well, the five essential survey is subjective, too. It's completely subjective.
Personally, I don't think that's a great measure. Like, I, I mean, that's just...
But it's subjective, it's a me- but...
You know, I, I don't like the idea that that's our only...
Yeah, I don't either, but to the point of Dave's question, is it asking not just what we're doing, but how our community sees, right? That's what that measure is, it's really looking at, like, we could do all these things, but if you're not, if not, if you're not experiencing that, community engagement is like, the point, right? So, I think that is already that kind of measure. So, I think adding another measure that's subjective isn't problematic, I think it's just a more nuanced look at how the community experiences the district.
Yeah, I, I think, so, again, just, I, I think you raise a valid point in terms of understanding where that disconnect is and what the perceptions are of, of those, I think, in, in the, the community, I guess, you know, again, from, from my vantage point, I'd like to have a better understanding of that, right? You clearly have a lot greater clarity in terms of that disconnect than, than perhaps certainly that, that I do, and, and maybe others around the table. I, I think on the strategy side, whether it's through the audit as a starting point, I'd like to gain a better understanding of that, to, to then perhaps drive, how do we monitor whether we're getting better or worse, right, in, in that area? I, I would struggle a little bit with going to the, how do we monitor without probably collectively us arriving at, I think, a little greater clarity around where, where is the gap? Where is the disconnect that we're seeking to sort of bridge the, the divide around, right? Which I, again, I think, I think, I think important, again, I think that the effort is not just to engage, but to ultimately see that engagement lead to people being more connected, not only to the district, but the goals, right, of the district for, for our kids. So, so I think, I, I think you're raising a, a, I think, an important thing that we need to try to get a, a greater handle around as a part of, I think, the strategy in community engagement that may help us pinpoint where the metric is, right? Maybe, maybe the metric is in measuring acts or actions that are, you know, are, are harmful, but maybe through kind of the audit and the engagement, what we'll find out is, this is really where the disconnect sits, and, and there might be a different strategy, right, that could help us get at that, that you could measure in a different way.
I think, real, real quickly, one other measure that doesn't necessarily be on here, but it's an example of this, is how the membership of the CAC has evolved, or we've reflected on it to say, does this membership accurately reflect our whole community? So, the various school representations, and then, I don't remember all the metrics, but it, but addressing those subgroups within the membership is an example of what I'm saying, is saying, don't just throw the applications out to the community, evaluate them for whatever that you look helpful or something, we're really saying, we really need to make sure we have voices on this committee that represent our community. So, that, that's something that we're doing, I don't think it needs to be reflected here, but that's, it's the same set lens we're wanting to apply everything we do.
I have a question, based on, kind of, coming from that, so, maybe not necessarily relating to the plan, so going off, yeah, to our topic a bit, but is there a way to have something like a chat with the board, where we invite targeted groups to come and, and share their experience with us, so that we know, like, we have that clarity of, of what you're hearing? You know, is there, is there a way to have those sessions where we welcome, you know, specific groups to come and speak with us?
I, I personally would affirm that, but, I don't, are you, you looking at...
I, I just, I mean, is that something that, you know, we can put in the plan for next year, right? I think we had one chat with the board this year, so, with Co-It and everything, but I, I think if we do have a sections of the community who feel unheard, it would be nice to hear. Just a thought, it's unrelated, I mean, related, but...
Yeah. I think it's very related.
What's that?
I think it's very related to community engagement.
Sure.
I guess I'm just saying, I'm not sure how you measure that as a metric, but just something that we may want to look at, including going forward.
Sure, yeah, it's, and, again, I think fair consideration under the, the strategy, you certainly can take your efforts to engage, I think, out to, to where you think you may be most, most likely to engage. You couldn't, as a board, have a public meeting where you, to find access for the public meeting, right? Like, if, if you're having a meeting, a chat with the board is a public meeting, it's gonna be open and accessible to anybody that chooses to, to show up to, to that, however, again, how, how you go about, you know, in like focus group format, trying to, you know, elicit or, or get specific feedback, right? That, certainly, we can do it from the district perspective, right, uh, much easier than likely you can do as a board through your function as a, of the board as a whole.
I can do, it's like we use America's app, sometimes one or two members tend to listen. You, you know, went out there and you were talking with, sometimes one or two of us would also be present, maybe that's what it is, is purposefully targeting areas that maybe we're not getting to, that we can do in, in that way, where our administration is there, and maybe there is a board member. Or something, something in the app.
I also wonder if there's a way to leverage, I mean, I, I think we would, my perception that CAC has been a positive thing, and it's progressed, it seems more interested, it seems like it's more impactful, or, we're getting more input, um, but I also know that's a big, you know, it's a big commitment, but is there something we could do, kind of bridge, kind of hybrid between, maybe not something as formal, but I just go, like, the chat with the boards that I've been to, participation is not, it's not great. I mean, and I remember the one that was at the Student Service Center, the only people there, because they were at the pancake breakfast, and they found, there was like, nobody there, so, um, because that's still the piece to me, is the engagement. Like, I think the communication's great, we, we, there's a lot of communication, but that's not what we, that's, I mean, that's an easy metric to check off, right? Board highlights when I, which, and I'm not, I, I think it's all good, but how do we get, how do we draw people to talk to us? Because, I don't, because even your comment about disconnect, I, that...
If we don't know about it, how can we address it?
Huh?
Like, if we don't know that there's a disconnect, or if we don't know what the issues are out there, how do we help put a, put a plan in place to fix it?
How do we draw, you know, I don't, and I, so I don't know if there's some way to do, I don't know, I don't know if there's a way to leverage the success of something like CAC into some, maybe not as formal, but regular sessions?
So, we're getting into the design of the community engagement plan, which is typically coming up over the summer, in the next couple of months, so I would propose that we continue this conversation as that plan gets developed, and then we can determine if there's any unique strategies or metrics that, that come out of that that could, we can measure. I don't think we're gonna come up with any answers tonight until we know what the plan is. So, I think it's more important to have the plan, and then determine what we could measure. And that's the next couple of minutes.
Yeah, I do think that, that's fair, and, and, again, this is the last little, little piece, right? So, uh, I mean, it's something to think about, how perhaps we can systematize a process, so, so admittedly, you, you are, you are voted right onto the board to represent the community, and you all, I think, have probably different stakeholders in the community that perhaps are accessing you more regularly, right, sharing their feedback, and that, 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 you know, I think that's always been a challenge of the Board of Education, is that simultaneously, it's, there, there are possibly seven people hearing from different voices, different factions, right out in the, the community, that may be representing different thoughts or ideas that might be aligned, might, might not be. What I think that does sometimes at the, at the table is that, you know, we, we try to operate, at least in terms of decisions we make, with this idea of, we don't, we don't want surprises, right? Like, I want all seven of you to have the same exact information that allows you together to arrive at the, the best decision, maybe we need to think about how you do that, right? So, so Mary is clearly carrying some information in terms of feedback from the, the community. It's very likely that Brad has information from different voices within the, the, the community, it's very likely that Dave has different voices, right? How do we bring that together, so that you're all operating with that same loop of feedback, right? Which would then maybe make it easier for us to understand, why does this particular perception exist in some portion of our community that leads us to a strategy to, to address it, right? I, I just, I wanted to illustrate that, to say, maybe that's something that we have to, to think about, so that collectively, maybe we have a better understanding of, what is the data point that's actually driving that? And, and maybe not operate under the, the belief that, well, maybe it's just, it's a political perspective, right, that's driving that, instead, I want to know what are, who's saying this, and where are they saying it, and how do we kind of all get to that same understanding of the, sort of the diversity of perspective and feedback loops that are in the community? I think that's a, I, I think, to Brad's point, sorry for laying, that, that I think there's a strategy for us to get at, probably before we, we then generate some data that then helps us to sort of monitor that piece, right?
Can I add a real quick thing? I, I agree that this conversation can move there, but because it came up, I think, one of, I'm trying to make it connect, I'm sorry if it won't, but, when parents feel, the reason that I brought up the individual actions in the schools and the community engagement plan, I figured this out as we were discussing, is that when parents consistently say, I've told the school, or kids say, this happened, if this happens to my child and the school does this, I don't want to go to a listen, you see, so, I think they're connected, maybe more than we think, of like, every interaction I have with the school is a little bit painful, then to go to some listening session feels like, why? So, that's why I think if we can really, yes, we want to hear from the community, but if we can really do a good job making sure those moments are handled, Chris does a lot of this.
Sure.
He's talking about moments, relationship, mapping this whole thing out, there's a problem there, we know this, and if we can address that, you know, that's why I think that kind of metric is looking at the root.
I, I, I agree, and, and I, and I'm not, I'm not discounting the importance of that. I'm a little concerned if we will only measure the impact of that moment through whether the parent says that was, that was handled well, and, and I say that only because I often hear the other side of that equation, right? An issue comes forward and I hear, or those around the, the table hear, how the school actually did handle it, and there's just a different perspective between the parent and the, the, the school on, on, you know, that, that piece, so, again, doesn't, like, we want to improve and make the situation better, I just want to be careful how we're monitoring, whether we're, like, we're doing that or not doing it.
What success looks like, I agree, and I think our, our efforts at restorative practice is actually aligned really nicely with that, but I'm sure that's a conversation for another one. I agree, though.
Anything else?
Two, I promise, really quick comments, um, this is all great data, um, I'm very interested in the design of the dashboard, you know, is it, does it link, provide links to information, is it, you know, does it show trend data when we have trend data, is it interactive with somebody who's working on it? So, very interested in how it's designed, is it useful, is it informative, is it understandable for the community? And then the other thing that maybe is another conversation, maybe it's a separate dashboard, but I think board accountability might be something we want to measure, or at least document, I know it's board training, board governance, or, there's gonna be probably changes on the board over the next two to six years, and I think we've established some expectations of how we function as a unit, as a board, and I think that might be something we want to elevate how we communicate and measure to our community. I don't know if it's piece of this, or if it's separate, but I think that's an important metric we monitor.
This was good, good conversation tonight, I appreciate it.
It was a great conversation.
It's nice to be in the square, right? Like, we can see each other, and, yeah. Makes it, uh...
All right. Um, in accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. Public comment sign-up sheet was made available until 7:00 P.M. We do not have any public comments tonight. So, I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemption 5 ILCS 120/2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson, um, Mr. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the vote? Yes.
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 Dr. Yubala?
Yes.
Uh, the meeting is adjourned to closed session, there is no action expected following closed session.